Alrighty. Lights, camera, action. We're good? Okay, we're on. Alrighty. Let's bring the, I'd like to bring the Town of Wapungia zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please? B.
Mr. Delacorte?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, here.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Here.
Mr. Delaunay?
Here. Alright, first order of business tonight would be the acceptance of the minutes from May 26, 2021. Has everybody had a chance to review?
Yes.
Any comments, changes, revisions?
No.
Alright, can I have a motion, please, to accept the minutes as written?
Motion?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
So moved. Alright, second order of business tonight is the adjourned public hearing. Appeal number 217721. Craig Bova seeking an area variance, section 24037 of district regulations in an R40 zoning district, where 25 feet to the side yard property line is required. The applicant can provide 12 feet for the construction of a 10 by 20 prefab shed, thus requesting a variance of 13 feet. The property is located at 5 Montford Road and is identified as tax grid number 635801173528 in the Town of Wapungia. Have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so I don't believe Mr. Bova is in the audience tonight. We had requested that Mr. Bova provide us with an accurate or a more accurate survey than he had last time, and I believe Barbara, he's in the process of doing that. Okay, so he's in the process of doing that, so the way surveyors are running these days, they're particularly busy. So, we are going to now then again adjourn this, our public hearing to a zoning board meeting in the future, probably two meetings out, I think. What was that date, B? What was the date?
July 13.
July 13? Alright, so we are going to adjourn this public hearing, do I have that a motion, right? Do I have a, can I have a motion to adjourn this to the July 13 meeting?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright, so moved. Okay, so we will go be adjourned, Mr. Bova's application to the 13th of July. Alright, next order of business tonight, public hearing. Appeal number 217729. Mary Biasati?
Hi.
Close, close. Seeking area variance, section 24037 of district regulations in an R40 zoning district, where 25 feet to the side yard property line is required. The applicant can provide zero feet for the legalization of an existing deck extension, thus requesting a variance of 25 feet. The property is located at 63 Brothers Road and is identified as tax grid number 625804952180 in the Town of Wapungia. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, Mary, what we would like you to do, if you could, is for the benefit of the board and anybody who might be listening in, is just give a very brief description of what you have and what you need. You have... You could be brief. You could be brief.
Oh, I'll be brief. Okay. The reason this is coming to the fore right now is that I'm going to be moving as soon as possible, okay? I've lived in my house for 55 years, okay? In 1990, the house was built in 1962, which was before the code, I guess. We moved in 1966, and there's been a series of improvements that we've made, but the, what's at issue here is that in 1994, we added on a deck that was 26 feet long and 16 feet wide, for which we didn't have a permit. And come to find out recently, the corner of the deck actually encroaches on my neighbor's property, my neighbor here, Bobby. And he's a good guy, we get along very well. So, that's good news. But not only is part of the corner on his property, but obviously the setback, that's why the setback is zero. So, I'm here tonight because you've all been, you've all seen the property. I'm here tonight to, I totally understand about encroachment on someone else's property. I'm here tonight to advocate that our, that the setback, that, for the sake of the buyer, actually, who saw this beautiful big long deck, that maybe we could trim it back as little as possible so that the procedure is minimally invasive, as we would say if it was a human. And I think that would, you know, it'd still be all on my property, but the setback obviously would not, could not be 25 feet, because even my own house is not 25 feet. So, I'm here to hope that maybe as little of the deck as possible could be cut back.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine, thank you. Alright, so we were all out at the house, right? We saw what's going on here, we had the property line strung out and as best as possible. So, we got a pretty good feel for what exactly is going on. I know what, you know, we all have the survey, and the survey has the distance from the home, right, to the property line, but as that concrete patio extends beyond the back of the home, it gets closer and closer and closer to the property line, because the property line runs at a skew, basically, to the home. So, so we were, you know, we were discussing this, the concrete, couple things, right? The deck was built on top of the concrete patio, right? The concrete patio, we'll call it a concrete patio for argument's sake, is part of the landscape. And, couple things. If the deck were not there at all, right, if all the wood was removed or never put there, you wouldn't need a variance at all, because the patio is considered part of the landscape. So, even though that patio is very close to the property line, probably three feet or so at its closest point, that could remain, and you would have, we require no variance whatsoever, right? So, the variance you're requesting now would just, basically, we would vote on it, it would be, you know, denied, and you would just, the deck would need to be removed, the concrete could remain. If you like to keep the deck in any length, whether it, whether we write at the concrete patio or extend beyond that, even at the concrete patio, you're probably, at that point, maybe three, three and a half feet from the property line?
Yes.
So, it would be a huge variance that you would be asking us to grant, probably somewhere in a neighborhood of 90%. So, that would be a lot. However, the survey, in order for us to even rule on something like that, we would need to know exactly what the distance was, for your benefit and ours, right? Distance was from the concrete patio, if we said you have to take the deck down to the concrete or whatever distance you want to take it down to, we would have to know what that distance is, right? From the, in order for us to grant you any variance, we'd have to know what that variance is. So, we need the measurement from the concrete patio to the property line. We can guess, right? Did you reach out to the guy at the survey at all?
No.
No? Because the, what we would need in order to rule on, if the deck were to remain in any way, shape, or form, right? We would have to then rule on a variance, right? The only, the only way to eliminate the need for a variance would be to remove the wood in its entirety. That's the only way to get away from a variance. If we want to grant any variance, we would need to know the distance, right, from the deck to the property line. Right now, we don't have that, right?
We all agree it's probably around three feet.
That's correct, yeah. You know, the best, the best guess, you know, just from seeing where you got your seven foot from the house, you know, is that, that property line runs pretty sharply, you know, gets closer and closer to the deck pretty fast. You know, guessing around the, around the concrete point, it's probably about three feet, maybe three and a half feet, which is, again, would be a huge, would be a very large variance you'd be, you'd be asking us to rule on. I can't tell you one way or the other whether the board would vote yea or nay on a variance like that, you know, I can't do that, but I could do, I can tell you that it would be a very large variance you'd be looking to get at that point. And anything beyond that would be even more, right? Anything beyond the concrete deck, you're getting closer to the property line, so that distance from your deck to your property line, as you move away from the concrete, gets closer, right? So, instead of being three feet, it might be two and a half, then two, you know, that kind of thing. So, it gets, it gets real tight to your property line. So, two things. We'd have to, one, if you, if you want to keep the deck up, with whatever distance you'd like to keep the deck up, we'd need to know from your surveyor, on the survey, what that distance is. If you could come make some kind of arrangement with your buyer, with your current buyer, to remove the deck in its entirety, you wouldn't need a variance at all. Those are basically the two options. So, we can't, we can't actually, unless, unless you were to agree to remove the deck in its entirety, we can't rule on a variance tonight, because we won't know what that distance is, right? If you want to leave it. The most expeditious and simplest course of action, of course, but more difficult on your end, because you have your home sold, would be to remove the deck, right? And then, you don't have to come back and see us again. If you want to have some of the deck remain, we need to know what that distance is from the deck to the property line, and then we could rule on it. We can't guess or estimate.
I'm her favorite son-in-law, when no one else is around.
And your name is, I said, for your record?
Ed LaLondo.
I'm sorry, what was that?
My name's Ed, Ed LaLondo.
Okay, and you are, your address?
Poughkeepsie Basser Road. I grew up in Wapungia for 50 years.
Okay.
Anyway. Wouldn't the concrete structure still be grandfathered in based on the initial foundation? So, therefore, anything over top of that, you should be able to still utilize? If she was to try to take that deck off, A, it could hurt the sale, B, now she's got to get into railings and whatever else, another code issue. Just trying to speak out loud and just to see if there's any way, I mean, the concrete's been there, it's been there for, since 61, when they built the house.
Issue with the concrete, it's the deck on top of the concrete? Go ahead, Barbara, I'm sorry.
But if you wanted to leave the concrete, then you'd have to prove it wasn't 61, which predates zoning, because usually, back then, in houses, they didn't build, or decks, or anything. So, if you can prove that that was there, then it would be pre-existing. The minute you start putting railings and wood, that takes it into a built deck. And that requires...
It was built with an enclosure on it already, when they bought the house, correct, Ma?
We didn't find any of the records.
It had a structure on the outside of it. That was all taken down, and then the deck was built.
Is there any record of that being built with the house? Because we couldn't find any records that there was a sun or a roof that had been built at the time the house was built.
Right. No, that was, that was later, we built that. Yeah. Because we, it's nowhere in writing on any of it, but we did build, it was a concrete slab when we moved in.
Right.
Okay. And then we, we built a screened-in porch on top of that, at a later date, I'd say late 60s.
Right, so that would be after zoning was placed. That should have had a permit, and the thing is that even back then, you would have needed at least 10 feet from the side. I have no idea how the house was built so close to the side, other than it predates zoning and nobody was looking.
Right, yeah.
But even the room, at the time, had you come in, you would have needed to get a variance to build on that patio in late 60s.
I think part of the issue, and Bobby, you can, you can probably agree with me on this, the, you've all been there, and the perception is not that I'm encroaching on his property, or that I'm, well, that maybe I'm close, because his driveway is right there, but his house is so far, that the perception is that it's not an issue at all. It's just that when we get down to the, you know, the measurements, the rulers, the, you know, the rules, okay?
Nobody ever know, right?
Exactly. Exactly. Which is kind of sad. Really, so just for the record, any time a variance is granted, it's granted with the house wherever more to continue.
Yes.
And that's why variance would have to be looked at closely, especially when they're more than 10, 20%, 30%. Yours would be extreme, being that close to the other side.
But cutting it, cutting to get back, I understand the rules, I get it, I do. But cutting the back, the deck back from 26 feet to 10 feet is so radical. And I know that the buyer, one reason I didn't contact the surveyor was because I was speaking with my Realtor, who was speaking with the buyer's Realtor, that there was a possibility that the, you know, the buyer would get involved and actually do what he wanted to do based on getting a variance, and maybe, instead of the deck going out this way from the house, he could extend it sideways along the length of the house, you know, where the garden is, where the bathrooms are on the inside. So, did not hear back. And I'm assuming that if I did contact the surveyor, it, he could, he could just look up on his CAD, is that what you call it? And let, it's just a number. That's correct.
Well, it's the scale, the drawing is the scale, I mean, and optically, you can see what's there, based on the drawing.
So, as far as scale goes, if this was the original survey, I would have been able to scale it, but this looks like a blown-up version, so you can't really scale something that's blown up or shrunken, I mean, the original.
You say the original that he has already, Oswald did one recently.
Yeah.
And it shows the 7.6 feet off the corner.
It's too easy for him in a computer to give you a dimension, so long as he knows the dimension of the concrete off the house.
Yeah. Yeah.
You have the original survey.
Here we have.
It doesn't show that it's concrete.
But we don't know where the concrete is.
Right. Just the wood, the concrete that's on there.
Oh, okay, well, he might know, he might have made no ice on his, but on yours, it just shows lines of a rectangle deck.
Okay. Well, Eddie and I have measured it, and the concrete comes out 10 and a quarter feet from the house. I mean, I realize you, you don't take my word for it, but that's what it is.
We were there, we pretty much...
So, we're cutting it back to the concrete, we're going back from 26 feet, which is obviously over the Bobby's property line.
Correct.
To 10 feet, that's...
That's correct.
So, we were, one suggestion would have been, but again, it would, the variance would be extreme. I grant you that, but to go back to the...
We're looking to go, we're looking to go to the girder, which is seven foot off of the, exists the end of the concrete porch, so to speak, which the deck is sitting on, and cut off nine feet plus the stairs, and that would basically make it a 17-foot deck by 16 wide, and it would just go to the first girder. I guess you guys had discussed that a little bit, out in the field with my brother-in-law.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the logical cutoff points, right? We're going to be at a girder, or the concrete, right, would be the easiest way, you know, it would be the most, the most beneficial way to retrofit it, you know, is if you cut it back to a girder, because you wouldn't have to put in another girder.
I realize that the variance is small at that point.
Yes.
But you've been there, and you realize, just, yeah, totally, just observing, it doesn't look, maybe on paper, it's not a major issue, but if you're there, and you know where Bobby's house is...
Yeah, sure.
I mean, by the way, it doesn't appear to be a major issue.
Yeah, I mean, aesthetically, right? I mean, you, you know, we're standing on your property or your neighbor's, you'd never know. If it was that close to the property line, you'd never know, especially as their driveway wraps around and goes up the hill.
I think we all assume the property line is straight back, and that, that's the problem.
Right, correct. That's correct.
So, I guess that's my argument, is that, okay, you've got the numbers and the angles, I get it, okay, but...
So, if you, if...
When you're there...
Yeah, sure, there's no doubt, there's no doubt. You know, whether the cutoff point, we're going to be at the concrete or at that additional seven, seven feet, you said? Beyond that, around there where the girder is? You know, either way, we would need to know on a survey what that distance is. We would have to, we would need to know that in order to actually rule on it. We wouldn't be able to do that tonight. We'd have to adjourn you, you know, adjourn you until you were able to get a survey that would indicate that distance. You follow me?
Or the other option would be...
To remove everything?
To remove the concrete.
Yeah.
The deck, that's the other option.
Then it would be done tonight, right?
That can, yes.
Like, I don't think that we're going to give it to you as-is, obviously. Cutting back to the concrete, I could see as being doable, because you have an existing substantial mass that, you know, whether it's clad in wood or just concrete, it's a question of definitions, but I don't see it as a major concern. But if you're already taking 16 feet off, it might be a lot easier for you to take the rest of it off at the same time and let the new owner do what they want.
Well, technically, it's nine, yeah, nine plus the stairs would be coming off to the, to the first girder. So, you'd have a 17-foot out, 10 concrete, 7-foot wood.
Right, right.
And then, you would still be within my mother-in-law's property.
You'd be within the property, but you're going to be really darned close to that property line, though. You know, the zoning, the zoning is 20 feet, 25 feet, right? So, if you're about 17, you're probably going to be maybe a foot or two, maybe, right, to the property line.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's almost like, it's almost like 100% variance, you know, you'll be looking, you'll be looking for us to grant. And that, that's a, you know, tough to grant.
And I know we discussed this quite a bit, but there was a lot to talk about that day when I was there, and maybe this part didn't, we didn't get it properly discussed with you about where to bring it back to, things like that. But, you know, as it is, it's a major, major variance.
I mean, it's huge no matter where it is, right, even if it's at the concrete, but it gets substantially larger faster, right? As you get further, further out, right, because it gets really close to that property line the further you go out, right? It gets closer fast, right? So, I guess, so the options then really are, if we were to rule on anything tonight, or the only thing we'd be able to rule on tonight is if you agreed to remove everything. If you wanted to come back at another, at the next meeting with a dimension, you know, we'd be able to rule on a variance, right? So, you're going to need a variance, the only way you won't need a variance is if everything goes away. So, you only, anything else you do other than that would require a variance, and we would need to know that distance in order to rule on that variance.
Basically, both distances?
I hate to say that.
Both distances?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Both, I'm sorry, both distances, the one off the concrete patio, and then one, one off the girder as well?
Yeah, sure.
17 feet out?
Yeah, sure, you could get us both, you know, but we would need to know which way you might want to go.
The one that you want to stick with is the one that we need to know.
Yeah.
Okay. So, trying to go through the concrete, that's the one we, if you want to move it out, because that's the one we have to rule on, and it has to be...
I want to give you false hope that we would approve the 17 feet. I think by and large, I would not vote for that. Like, I don't want you to waste time trying to find other configurations.
David brings up a valid point, you know, that the three or the three and a half feet, whatever the concrete point is going to be, that's a huge one, it's going to be, you know, a little bit of a tough pill to swallow. That we get, you know, further out, and you're only a foot off, that's going to be very difficult to, to vote, to have a positive outcome, I would say.
The only thing we were thinking is, you guys, we're talking 10-foot to cut it, let's say. We were out at 26 feet with a two-foot encroachment on Bobby's property.
Right.
We were looking to try to cut out two or three feet on the end, kind of make an inside stairwell, if you will, on, you know, underneath the bush there, cut off the 1.7 foot, and go from there. So, that was what, obviously, our option was, the first one. Yours was at 10, so to speak, and then, we're looking to maybe meet in the middle, 17, something to keep the girder, something to keep semblance of a deck, you know, 16, 17, something like that, but...
Totally understand that, but David had mentioned, you know, if you had 17 feet out, you're probably only about a foot off of that property line. So, it's almost about 100% variance you're looking at for us to grant you.
We'd want to be around a 30% variance, which even at the concrete, you would not have, you'd still be at probably 80%.
And you're basing that off at 25 feet?
25 feet.
Is that what you're saying, that that's where you're getting...
Exactly, yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Unfortunately, the house is at 17.
Yeah, I know.
Somehow it moves.
I know.
We know that.
And, you know, we do take that type of, those type of things into consideration, you know, and weighing in on whatever variance, you know, we would ultimately rule on. But, you know, the three-foot or whatever it is, going to be at that concrete landing, you know, is going to get you in the 80% range probably, but understanding, you know, the house is all the way over there, too. That's why we, because even, even, you know, a variance, somebody would come in, say, with an 80% variance, even that percentage would be very difficult for the board to, to favor, you know, to vote positively on. But being the circumstances that you're at, and your home is so close to the property line, you don't have a lot of options. And we take that into consideration. So, even being that, that we believe at that point you would be at 80%, we would still think seriously about, you know, going positive, but it would be, that would probably be the max.
And that's partly because you have that existing concrete patio. If that concrete patio wasn't there, I don't think we'd even be considering cutting it back to that, because it would be too great of a variance, you know, like that patio, I think, is working in your favor and making it, you know, more a site-specific condition that we would feel more comfortable with.
Yeah, and the other thing, too, you know, the board needs always to be concerned about is setting precedents. But you have extenuating circumstances at your home, where your house is, you have your concrete patio already, so there's, there's circumstances that are unique to your property, of course. Not some good, not so good, right?
It seems like we were doomed in 1960, before we even knew we were moving to that house, because of where they built it.
Right.
Who knows why?
Right, sure.
I mean, you enjoyed it for quite a few years.
Yeah. 55.
And Mary, just let me ask you real quick, the second deck on the back of your house? The second deck on the right side?
Oh, yeah.
That one's been there for how many years, or how long is that one?
That also was built in 1994.
Okay. Thank you.
It was upgraded from an older deck that we built in '72.
Okay, thank you.
So, what we, I think that the road we're going down, you could correct me if I'm wrong, that we're, we're going to want... No, I'm sorry, sorry, I say, I think the road we're going down, you could correct me if I'm wrong, is that you're going to be looking to get some variance, right, to retain some portion of the deck. So, then, we would then adjourn this public hearing to the next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight or so, right? We would adjourn that, we'd ask you to ask if you could get your surveyor to put on the survey the distance for, over to the property line from the end of that concrete pad, and put that on the survey and get it to...
Or from the end where they want it.
Yeah, it would, it would, it would be your choice, you know, whether to do it at the 17 feet or at the 10, 10.7, whatever that, or both. But, you know, we would only be able to rule on one, before you came, we would need to know which way you'd want to go, right?
Okay.
Okay. So, Joe, what we're going to do is I'm going to ask to have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the...
22nd June.
The 22nd of June, which would be the next meeting here. And we have a motion, please, to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. So, you're adjourned then to the June 22 meeting. In the interim, get ahold of your surveyor, have him put, he should be able to do it fairly easily with the CAD, you know, you push a couple buttons, he should be able to do it, and give you that distance, and get that to these nice folks here at Town Hall, and they'll distribute it to us, and we'll go from there. Okay, I wish I could have made this more expeditious for you, Mary, but it's due process.
Yes, I am anxious to get the exposure. Yes, I am anxious to get the exposure on this.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll see you on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
All right, so the next order of business tonight is a discussion, appeal number twenty-one, seven, seven, thirty. Monica Mosika?
Michael.
Michael, I'm sorry, Michael. Seeking an area variance, section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R forty zoning district, where no accessory structure is permitted in the front yard. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow for a twelve-foot by twenty-one-foot above-ground pool to be placed in their front yard. The property is located at twenty-six Relly Terrace and is identified as tax grid number six-two-five-six-zero-two-six-zero-eight-nine-four-five in the town of Wappinger. Michael, you're here. Michael, sorry about that. Come up a little, yeah, come up a little closer. What we, what we'd like to ask you to do, Michael, is just to give us a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
Okay, I'm trying to build a swimming pool for my kids.
Yeah, gotcha.
On the side of my house, but unfortunately, the side of my house is considered my front yard.
That's it in a nutshell? Yeah, are you looking at your, your survey?
Can you indicate on the survey where, where that, where you're proposing? I, I just don't see it labeled on there.
I have a drawing there, but it would be here.
On the right side, yeah, on here, he shows.
Yeah, on the right side of the house.
So it's essentially, essentially here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the other thing was, I'm sorry, you were talking when we.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, you're good. Go ahead, I'm good.
So on the survey, I'm just curious where the streets are, what their names are, and why they're considered front. I don't see any, any labels on here of streets.
So there is a.
A street.
This is the street here, right?
Yeah, that's UJ Terrace.
What's it called?
UJ Terrace.
UJ?
Yeah, it's a little, a U and a J.
So you're, you're essentially a corner, corner lot?
Yeah.
In essence. A big corner lot.
But not really.
It's just the road literally comes on a bend.
Yeah.
And this house was just built about a year ago.
Oh, not even, yeah.
So there's been a house. And then this was built in its place.
He's getting a little ahead of himself.
I just wanted to see.
How big is the piece, the property?
Uh, it's one point two-two eight yards, I believe.
I see you're, you're well anseptic, yeah, you are well anseptic.
And if I put it in the, in the backyard, my, my well's there, and my propane's there. And if I go further, there's swampland there, and it's, it's not ideal back.
Yeah, looks like you got some topo you gotta deal with too, right?
There's kinda a hill in the backyard, it looks like, after the, the swale?
Uh, yeah, a little bit, a little bit of a hill. And my, across the street neighbor has an in-ground pool directly in their front yard, like their for-real front yard.
Their real, for-real front yard.
And then down the street, there's also somebody with a pool in their front yard. Um, so I figured doing it on the side wouldn't be a big deal, until I found out that my side was also.
Just your side is really your front. Yeah, so the road, the road, yeah, you can see the road kinda actually sweeps around the property, right?
And I have a, I do have a fence there.
Yeah.
Um, so you can't see it from the roof, but.
Okay. What, what we usually do is we, we schedule a site visit to your home. I don't know if you guys are available, this, this Saturday might be a little difficult for me, if you wanted to make it next Saturday.
This Saturday would be very difficult for me.
Yeah, it's better, right, yeah. Joe, anybody know what date, date is?
A week, a week from?
A week from this Saturday. Come on, B.
It is the nineteenth.
The nineteenth?
Twenty-second is Tuesday.
So it'll be the nineteenth? All right, so we will, we'll schedule a site visit, we'll come out and take a look, see what you got going on. We'll probably be there around nine o'clock in the morning-ish, you know. What's helpful, if you can, I know your, the property's pretty big, if you could locate that property line?
It's already mapped out.
It is?
Yeah, because I just purchased the property.
Okay.
Um, so the.
The stakes are still there?
The stakes and.
The ribbons?
Yeah.
All right, perfect, all right, great.
You could also mark where the pool is gonna be, this way.
Whatever you want, yeah.
Yeah, I think the pool location would be good, because it's not a matter of setbacks, right? It's just the yard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true. Yeah, so you kind of line out or just paint out where you're gonna put the pool, that'd be great.
I think we basically wanna see if, looking at it, it feels like you're putting a pool in the very front of your yard, which I'm guessing it's not.
Yeah, it doesn't look that way.
See it.
It doesn't look that way.
I get it, I get it.
And you have some encumbrances with your well and your septic, because it kinda limits you, where you could put it as well now.
And it's an odd shaped site.
It's the spot. Yeah. Okay, all right, so then we'll see you on the nineteenth at about nine o'clock.
The earlier the better, I work on it every Saturday, so.
Oh, do ya? Okay.
Actually, we really don't need you there.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you had a mark.
You have to work, we can, the moment you're marking there.
I'd rather be there.
Yeah, I.
That's fine.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. All right, thanks, Michael.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. You get to take a sign home. You're welcome, thank you.
It sweeps around, actually. All right, next item on tonight's agenda, another discussion, appeal number twenty-one, seven, seven, three, two. George and Teresa Baker, a little easier than the last one. Seeking an area variance, section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R twenty zoning district, where twenty feet to the side yard property line is required. The applicant can provide fourteen feet for the construction of a twenty-by-twenty-six addition, thus requesting a variance of six feet. The property is located at one-two-three Hedge Hill Drive and is identified as tax grid number six-three-five-eight-zero-three-zero-seven-five-zero-seven-nine in the town of Wappinger. Yeah, Georgia Teresa here. Come on up. Come on down. Just for, for the record, your name and address, please?
Teresa, one, one, three, and two, drive one.
All right, great, you're pretty, pretty straightforward, but just give us a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
Well, at, at some point in time in the future, I'm gonna get my adult sister.
Yes.
One, and if something happens, I'm up.
Sure.
And right now, the bedroom that we have is not really big enough for an adult. So we wanna go out, add to our bedroom.
Gotcha.
Add to the other bedroom, and have then two full baths, because right now, I only have one full bath.
Gotcha. Yeah, if I'm looking at this correctly, the addition's gonna go out toward the driveway?
Correct.
It is, it's gonna go out that way. So you're gonna lose some of your driveway, I guess?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's kinda twenty feet going this way?
Correct. Yes, looks like you have like thirty-five feet to the, to the home now, it looks like you're coming out twenty, is that about right? And if you're coming, you're coming out twenty feet with the addition.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it gonna be two-story or just one?
Two-story.
Do you have an existing garage that you're covering then?
I do have.
I'm just guessing if the driveway came in and turned into a garage on the side of the house, right?
Exactly.
So, or is it gonna be a garage below, living above?
Yes, that's gonna be a garage.
So you're gonna go straight into it, or it's gonna be kind of turn around?
Nope, straight in.
Is the driver, driveway gonna be adjusted?
As far as making it wider?
You'd be going straight into the new, right? So you're gonna be, the driveway then kind of, something like that?
Um, this actually isn't as far out as it looks.
I'm looking at the house.
That's why we come out and look.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be able to see that when we get there. So the driveway, when it exits the road, is not gonna change? That location where the driveway hits the road is not gonna change? That's the most important, you don't need a curve, different curb cut or anything? Right? Okay, you guys have any other questions?
No.
I thought you asked me.
That's, that's fine, you too. So, okay, so then on the same date, it was, what was the date again, that Saturday? I'm sorry, the nineteenth? All right, so we'll do a site visit at your place as well. We'll probably be there sometime between nine fifteen and nine thirty on that date, if, if possible. It'd be great if you could locate that property line, so we can see that, and maybe just kinda mark out how, where the addition's gonna be on the driveway. You know, that'd be fairly simple, right? And that'd be great, and we'll come and take a look.
You got it.
All right, so we'll see you that Saturday around nine fifteen, nine thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your homework. Hopefully, you're still leaving out some homework.
All right, next item on tonight's agenda, again, a discussion, appeal number twenty-one, seven, seven, thirty-three. Jason Rogers, seeking an area variance, section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R forty zoning district, where twenty-five feet to the rear yard property line is required. The applicant can provide sixteen point seven feet for the construction of a twelve-by-twenty-six deck with stairs, thus requesting a variance of eight point three feet. The property is located at fifty-three Fieldston Loop and is identified as tax grid number six-two-five-seven-zero-six-three-two-zero-seven-five-one in the town of Wappinger. Joe, I don't think you're Jason Rogers. But you're representing Jason Rogers. Yeah, sure, yeah, uh-huh, yeah, sure. Yes. Got it. Now, this is.
Yeah, the deck shown on the survey, is that where it's gonna be located?
Exactly.
Okay, so that's not, is that an existing deck that's being rebuilt?
No, it's there.
Okay.
It's there, so it's on the survey.
So.
So it's already built, the new deck?
The existing from Monday, and it won't happen.
So you're adding to it?
Exactly.
Right. So it's, right, so there's, there's an existing deck, and there's an additional deck. To make, to make a riot, oh, yeah, gotcha, you're enlarging the existing deck.
Sixteen-seven.
Uh, yeah, this door.
There's still sixteen-seven.
This is proposed, this is existing.
Yeah, I have this one.
Yeah, that's what I did, yeah.
So it's being extended, basically? It's, it's being extended and the stairs being put at different locations that?
The same, that's where you see it.
No, I was just saying, we're going, drawing the plot plan.
If you look on the plan, observe it, right where it is, it's going in the same spot, except it's making it a little bit further out.
Okay, so that's what we're trying to.
On survey, it's got two decks, so I.
That's a different property.
These are side by side, like duplexes.
Yeah.
The line where it says one oh five?
Yeah.
That's, that's a property line right there, so we're talking about this right here.
Can you draw the survey exactly where it's going? Would be helpful.
That'd be zero feet.
That's an interesting question.
It's the existing one, that's there.
Okay. And the stair is doing this?
No, they're going, no, it's gonna go this way, it's gonna come out that way.
Okay.
So it's not gonna come out.
So this aligns like this?
Correct.
Okay.
Got it.
And that's gonna go like this.
Got it.
Yes.
So on the plot plan that we're looking at?
Correct, that's right, exactly where it is. The stairs are coming onto the body, they're not gonna go straight out. Just for voiding.
Like right there?
Correct.
Is what's there already?
This is already.
The stairs are coming here.
But we're making the whole deck new, but since this was built.
So we're basically legalizing what's there, and you're redoing it, you're rebuilding it.
Correct.
In the process of rebuilding it, we're making it legal.
Because back then, the footage, the setbacks were not the same as what they are now.
Okay. Did you know the age of the existing deck?
This is a setback, this, these are the setbacks when the sound division was.
Are they still twenty-five?
Yes, because this is a community, when it was built. That's the setbacks that are actually on the cloud back. Because you're making it bigger.
It's just the stair that's making it bigger.
You know, I.
Gotcha.
Right, I follow you, I know, Fieldstone, it's hitting me now.
So if it was rebuilt, and the stair was rebuilt in the exact same configuration, so now we would be.
I think this is a little big, or how big is the actual existing deck?
The actual existing deck was twelve? No, probably it was twenty feet coming out from the, you know, one way.
Yes.
And then it's coming out, he said, between ten and twelve.
So, the new one, if that's true, and it's roughly ten by twenty, she's, they're now building a deck that's twelve by twenty-six with stairs.
Right.
So, it's not hot, but it's still bigger.
Yeah, right.
It's wider.
So let's go from ten to twenty, okay, because the existing survey has sixteen point seven to the existing deck, which if the existing deck is ten feet and a ground twelve feet, then should that be a fourteen point seven?
They're straight two places. All the way across, all the way around.
Yeah.
So I had fourteen point seven, and then someone told me that the existing deck is twelve feet, so then we went with sixteen point seven. That's correct, and maybe it should be measured out in the field, and we may have to change that.
Yeah.
Because if you look on the plot plan, we originally had fourteen point seven.
Yes. And then it says Lisa from My Way, is that you? Okay.
Change plot?
No, I don't have fourteen, I have twelve.
Well, but here it says twenty-five to the rear, and then on May twenty-first, from My Way, change for plot plan measurements, Krista over the phone. And that's why it was then sixteen point seven.
So it sounds like fourteen point seven is correct, so.
So we'll see.
Yeah, but we're, we're gonna need Lisa, right, Lisa?
Lisa.
Lisa, we're gonna need somebody to be able to locate that property line.
This one.
Yeah. Right, your rear, it's the rear property line.
So if it's actually fourteen foot seven, instead of sixteen foot seven, they haven't sent anything out to the newspapers about that yet, right?
Yes, and David's absolutely correct, I think we should go for the larger variance, and if you need less, and you only need this, you know,
Right.
For the fourteen point seven, so we'll change the paper. Because otherwise, you'd have other publishers.
Is that?
You can always go smaller, you can.
Fifteen or sixteen?
I see it's a sixteen.
Yeah, it looks like a sixteen.
It's sixteen point seven.
Yeah, it looks like sixteen point seven, to the.
And sixteen point seven, that's sixteen feet, seven inches.
That's correct.
Which is also a difference.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
No, the question comes, though, Lisa, is.
No, no, he was just asking if the number was okay.
But we're, we're still concerned, if you're going out another two feet from what's there, then you need to. So I'd rather publish for the bigger number.
Yes.
Because it becomes fourteen point seven, not sixteen point seven.
If we have.
Well, picture, yeah, the decimal, right, because even the sixteen foot seven is.
Then they're requesting ten-three, which is still sixteen point seven.
That's true, if we have something to measure.
So you basically just want the, you want just the, the actual deck with the amount?
Correct. We would, we're gonna, we're gonna need to know where that, you know, that, I think is basically the rear property line? Yeah, we're gonna wanna measure from the, from the existing deck to the rear property line. Right.
Why don't I just give you the width of the actual deck upstairs now?
What's that?
I'm thinking it's twelve feet.
So we see the accurate number, right? If it's ten feet and you're adding two feet, that's completely different than if it's already twelve feet.
I would, I would go measure that width, that width of that deck, absolutely. And then, once I have that measurement, then you'll know what the additional variance that you would need.
Sure. Yeah.
Right? Okay.
But if you want an answer in two weeks, you have to publish, you have to mail these out this week. Otherwise, you'd have to wait until tomorrow.
No, I'll go do it tomorrow.
Okay.
Oh, no.
I'm gonna hang on to these then.
I'll come tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, when I'm out? I'll come tomorrow, yeah, when I'm out?
Okay.
I'll do my thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's gonna, if she has to change it, you have to give her time.
Yeah, so, so then, we will, we'll do a site visit, okay, we'll do that on Saturday, the nineteenth. I'm having a hard time with that, the nineteenth today. And, right, and we'll be there, you know, between nine thirty and nine forty-five, so we're in our neighborhood, between nine thirty and nine thirty, probably nine thirty to ten, between nine thirty and ten, depending how long the other two.
Okay, not for me, as I'm splitting the homeowner.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah, yeah, let them know we'll be out there. Yeah.
Oh, I'll come in.
Yeah, you'll have to come in to pick up.
All right, thank you.
Yes, and we will be there. All right. All right, thank you.
The existing deck, which is sixteen point seven feet away.
Now, we can just schedule a public hearing? Oh. You know, Lisa, we're gonna, we're also gonna schedule you for a public hearing at the next planning board meeting?
I have all of this ready for her, but I'm just gonna wait until she gives me the numbers.
Sure.
For the legal notice, just wanna make sure the numbers are accurate.
Sure. So, so Lisa, this is Barbara, Lisa. Lisa, we're gonna schedule you for a public hearing. Lisa, Lisa, hello, Lisa? We're gonna schedule you for a public hearing on June twenty-second, okay? I think, uh, that would probably conclude our businesses for this evening.
If I can have the attention.
Yes. On, on the record. We're adjourned, okay, all right, so, so we're done with the official business for this evening, can I have a motion, please, to adjourn? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, we are adjourned, thank you.